Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting, which is August 9th, 2018, of the Citrus Heights City Council. And if you'd all please rise. Ruth Ann, would you lead us in the flag salute? Where's the flags? Who got the flags?
Come on.
Well, good thing we're not on TV. Everything went well in rehearsal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Van, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Slowey.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bruins.
Present.
And Mayor Miller.
Here.
Tonight's meeting of the East Citrus Heights City Council is not live. It is being taped and will be rebroadcast on Metro Cable 14. The city of Sacramento is holding a meeting at this same time, and therefore, we are not live tonight. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net when it's replayed. Tonight's meeting will replay on Sunday, August 12th, at 9:00 a.m., and then again on Monday, August 13th, at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. And a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. Next item?
Next item is approval of agenda.
Anybody want any approval?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The agenda's approved. Next item.
Next item is presentation number four, award of financial reporting achievement.
And I'm going to ask the council to join me down there in a second when Mr. Boyd's done.
Good evening, council. My name is Chris Boyd. I'm the city manager, and we have a great opportunity here to recognize some of our finest employees for an outstanding achievement in their performance, and that's our finance division. The city of Citrus Heights has been awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report, which is known as a CAFR. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. Now, this achievement really is a great honor. Our finance division is led by our Assistant City Manager, Rhonda Rivera, and she's got a fantastic team. And I know, Mayor, we have the actual award from this finance association, so it would be great if perhaps you and the council personally could award our employees with this great honor.
Certainly.
And I just want to take a quick moment and say thank you to the city council and city manager Boyd, and take this opportunity to introduce what a great team that we have here in Citrus Heights with our finance division. So as I introduce you, will you please come up and join the city council so that we can take a group picture as we commemorate this award for the city? First, I'd like to introduce Tammy Nosardi. She is the finance manager. Tammy has been with the city since 2008. And then we have Christina Andrade. She is our payroll specialist. She joined the city in 2012. The city was very fortunate. In 2018, we were able to hire four new finance members. We hired three accounting technicians. We have Catherine Bayuk, Jennifer Flynn, and Joan Casper. And then we had, our last hire of the year was our senior accountant auditor, Cliff Ingram, who is also a CPA. And so now, our finance team is complete for the first time in a year, and we're very excited. So again, thank you.
You would like to say something?
Yeah. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Chris Boyd, Rhonda Rivera, and Bill Zanoni. He's not here today, but if it wasn't for you three, none of us would be here. So thank you.
Come on over this way.
Ready? One, two, three. One more.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're so proud of our finance department. They keep our heads above water and keep us in the black. So, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Jeff, would you like to lead off tonight?
Certainly. Oh, a week or so ago, I covered for the mayor at the RT Board. I typically do that once a year, so never up to speed on that board when you only show up once. But it was interesting, the Smart Ride that we piloted here earlier this year.
February, yeah.
It's now up to 12 buses. Four of them run in town, and it's migrated to three other places outside of Citrus Heights, so it's obviously working very well. I know many of us participated Tuesday night in the National Night Out, so I wanted to thank all the neighbors. There was over 20 in town. Obviously, we didn't, you know, personally hit all of them, but went to several and had some good food and met some good folks. This afternoon, the library board was canceled, which would have met today. And then I covered for Al at the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting today. I actually have some handouts that were part of a presentation there. Did not have time to copy them for the councilmembers, so I will be in here tomorrow, and they'll be in your mailbox by end of the day. But it's just some presentations that happened that I thought might be worth your time to see. So, outside of that, I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Nothing.
Mr. Fox?
Just very briefly, thank you, Jeff, for covering for me today. The two events that we had was, of course, National Night Out, which I think we were all in attendance. It was a great evening, going to some of the different homes. We happened to have a, my car, with the commander, we happened to have a, one of the news reporters for the Sentinel that rode with us, and so that was an interesting time, as she learned a little bit more about the city and some of the events that go on. And we also had the quick car wash over on Antelope, was, they had their ribbon cutting in Grand opening. Place was packed, a very good turnout by the community over there, and I think it was 10 days of free car washes, so you won't be able to get down the street over there part of the time because they're trying to get in for their free washes. And that was about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bruins?
Thank you. Well, the sanitation district is dark for the month of August, so I have nothing to report there. And I had no committee meeting, so I have nothing to report there either.
Wow, that's easy. I didn't have regional transit. Jeff obviously covered for me while I was camping, I believe. And it was really nice to participate in National Night Out. I had a great time with our newest lieutenant, Chad Morris. Learned some interesting things about him, but since he's not here to defend himself, I'll keep them to myself. But not only did I enjoy meeting the neighborhood watch groups, it's really neat to get out there and get into, get some places in Citrus Heights you haven't been to in a long time and see some of the streets and get a tour of the city. And that's part of what Chad's got to defend himself. He got us lost for a while there, but we finally found our way from one event to the other. I did want to mention, just noticed that the National Weather Service is predicting some slightly cooler temperatures and some clearing of the smoke that's been plaguing us in the valley. And of course, our hearts and minds go out to those that are truly affected by the fires. This smoke is secondary, but it's nasty. So, as things clearing it a little cooler and you're going to enjoy the outdoors, I just, please don't start any more fires. I'll be safe out there. That's my message. And also, speaking of the outdoors, we did get an update from the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District, and they wanted to inform us that they're going to continue to monitor West Nile in the Citrus Heights area, and they're concerned because of the number of mosquito samples and dead birds that have tested positive. If you want to see the West Nile activity that they're monitoring, it's fightthebyte.net. Tomorrow, they'll receive some new laboratory surveillance results that will help them determine if aerial spraying is necessary. And in the event that they move forward with these plans, the spraying would take place early next week, but that's not confirmed. They will let us know, and we'll try and get the word out as soon as we know. So I just want, remember to, that the biggest activity times around dusk and dawn, and protect yourself with mosquito repellent. And that is all I have. So if we could go to the next item.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. Any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times. And at this time, I do not have any speaker sheets.
Okay. Before we move on, though, I want to make sure. Anybody here to speak? See no one rushing forward? Okay, let's move on to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six, just five and six.
Oh.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, second, approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Consent calendar passes.
Next item is public hearing, item number seven. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts 9701, levy of fiscal year 1819 assessments. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 1819 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701.
Thank you. Welcome. Hi, Artelyn.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, councilmembers. My name is Artelyn Flores, and I'm one of the city's associate civil engineers. Tonight, I present to you the first of two landscaping assessment district items. Pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, each year, the city must update the assessments for its various landscape maintenance assessment districts. This is the final step needed to update the landscape maintenance assessment districts for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing, take action, and adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment, and to levy for fiscal year 2018-19 assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Any questions from council? I'm going to open the public hearing. Now's your chance to come forward if you want to speak on this item. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move, pardon me, that we approve the Landscape Assessment District 9701, Zone 1 through 4.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, to approve District 9701, Zones 1 through 4. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, this item carries.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, public hearing number eight. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts 9801, 9802, and 0301, levy of fiscal year 1819 assessments. And there are three resolutions for each of the districts to confirm the diagram and assessments and to levy fiscal year 1819 assessments for the Landscape Maintenance Assessment districts.
Okay, this next item is very similar to the first one, so the paragraph is basically the same. Here I go. Pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, each year, the city must update the assessments for its various landscape maintenance assessment districts. This is the final step needed to update the Landscape Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2018-19. Staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing, take action, and adopt each of the resolutions to confirm the diagram and assessment, and to levy the fiscal year 2018-19 assessments for landscaping maintenance assessment districts Number 9801, 9802, Zones 1 and 2, and 0301, Zones 1 and 2.
All right. Not seen any questions. I'm going to open the public hearing. And seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing on this.
Mr. Mayor, I would further move that we approve Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9801, 9802, 0301, and Zones 1 and 2.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries.
The next item is public hearing number nine. The subject is the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District, levy of fiscal year 1819 assessments. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year 1819 assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Leslie Blumquist from the General Services Department. Here again with the final step regarding the proposed annual Citrus Heights lighting district assessments for 1819. We are recommending to convene the public hearing and adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment for the lighting district and levy assessments for fiscal year 1819. I would like to bring to your attention the revised and updated budget analysis, which was left for you. We did receive slightly updated numbers from the county recently, with a slight change in the special assessments anticipated for fiscal year 1819. I'd also like to bring your attention to the fiscal year 1718. The actual costs were updated from what was spent last year with the final budget numbers from fiscal year 1718. The assessments collected did not cover the full cost of the district expenditures, and so there is a supplemental fund from Measure A of about $62,000 to balance the budget for this district. The current assessment rates that we are collecting was already in place when we took over the district in 2006, and with the proposition, the passage of Prop. 218, they can only be changed by a vote of the people. And if it pleases the council, we would be willing to come for a study session to discuss the status of the district at a later date, if that's something that you guys would like to do.
We could talk about that at the end of the meeting.
And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Questions? Does it look like we have any questions? And again, for those listening, it sounds like we're moving through these really quick, but this is, we already heard these items and called for the public hearing tonight. So I'm going to open the public hearing and see if anybody's rushing forward. No, we're going to close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure? Any discussion?
And just one. Did I hear you say the other revenue was Measure A for the lighting district?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Well, Jeff is the first, and I'll take Al as the second.
Okay.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any no's or abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is public hearing, item number 10. The subject is adopting the amended 2018 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program and authorize the city manager to execute all contracts necessary to implement the amended 2018 CDB Action Plan. And there is a resolution approving the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan Amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Stephanie Cotter, Development Specialist in the Community and Economic Development Department. Sorry, let me move my chair a little closer. So this evening, this is an administrative item that also requires a public hearing for our CDBG program. I'm just going to give you a sneak peek of where I'm heading. So the recommendation at the end will be to first conduct a public hearing, which is required by HUD for the program. And then the second item would be to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the 2018 Action Plan and to authorize the city manager to execute all contracts necessary to carry out the amended Action Plan. So just a quick background, the city receives annual Community Development Block Grant funding, referred to as CDBG. It's kind of a tongue twister. And we get this funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the acronym for that is HUD. So the funds are, there's lots of requirements, but the main purpose of these funds are to develop viable urban communities, and we do this through providing decent housing, suitable living environments, expanding economic opportunities. And one important thing about this program is it's principally targeted towards low and moderate income households and individuals. So, part of the requirements for the CDBG program, the city has to adopt an annual action plan, and this outlines how we're going to spend our CDBG funds for the year. So, we can make minor changes without coming to council, but any substantial changes require city council approval. And this is a little bit of a background of where we are right now. So we're currently in our 2018 CDBG program year. It operates on a calendar year, not a fiscal year like the city's budget. So on November 9th, the council adopted the 2018 Action Plan, and then the calendar year starts on January 1st. On April 26th, the council adopted Amendment Number 1 to the Action Plan, which removed one activity and added another. And on May 1st, HUD released the actual grant amount. So when we adopt the initial action plan, we do it off of an estimated amount, because the federal government doesn't do their budget allocations until later in the year. So, our estimated grant amount was $589,000, and that's based on previous year's grant amounts. So it's actually a good thing, but our allocation was over $100,000 more than our estimate. And because of this, we need to have a formal amendment showing how we're going to spend these additional funds. We're recommending that we give a majority of the funds to the city's 2018 Citywide Accessibility Improvement Project. This was originally approved as part of the original action plan, and it was allocated The General Services Department, they identify locations based on resident input, and also they look at what other improvements need to be done, so that way, we can leverage funds. So if we do a project and it needs accessibility improvements, but it also needs drainage improvements, we try to do those at the same time, so that way, we're not paying twice the cost to go back into certain locations. So this does have a CDBG component as well as stormwater component. This is just the funding for the CDBG component of the project. So we're recommending that we increase the allocation to this item from $383,000 to $469,000 to $93,000. So it'd be about an $86,000 increase. In addition, we're allowed to take 20% of the entire CDBG allocation for program administration, and this covers the city's costs for meeting all of the requirements, the federal requirements for managing the program. And so, we're also recommending that we increase the line item for administration to $139,323, and that's an increase of about $21,000. And that is because the staff time to actually administer these requirements, we actually end up subsidizing it a bit with the general fund, so we try to maximize the amount that we can get within each grant year amount. So we limit the amount of general fund that has to go to administering these programs. So just a little bit about the 2018 accessibility project. There's 21 locations total, and I had to split the map in two so you could actually read it, because it was kind of a big map. And then the legend on the left shows general location of where these are in the city. The beige areas are the CDBG target areas, and that's how we can utilize our CDBG funding for these capital improvements, is within those areas. And then other areas, we can also use with additional funding, such as stormwater. So this is the second set of locations, and you can see this is heavily concentrated up in the northwest area of the city. So, the final decision is your pleasure. This is what we're recommending for the additional funding. This is a look at the entire action plan right now, with all the different categories. So there's the public services, the capital projects, the planning and administration. We're only recommending changes to the capital portion and to the planning and administration. And you can see the strikeout versions there of the former costs and then the costs that were, or the funding that we're recommending being allocated. And before I open the public hearing, do you have any questions?
Any questions of Ms. Cotter? Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, going back to the map of the projects, number one, as I was having my weekly chicken fried steak breakfast this morning at Rosie's Cafe, which is a wonderful restaurant.
Nice.
Shameless plug. Is that that area that has that asphalt by the ranch motel that, instead of sidewalk and all that floods and all that?
Exactly. So we've received input from residents about that, and as part of this project, the additional funding that we're allocating is actually to include that within the project, so that wasn't included in the former price. But with this addition, we can include that location in the project, and it will replace that missing section of sidewalk.
And I don't know that you would have any idea about this, but any idea on a timeline on that one particular?
I do. So Stuart provided me with a timeline, and the bid actually, the bids were opened this week, and so he plans to award the construction contract at the August 23rd meeting, and then construction would start September 4th and would be completed by December 14th. And we expect the final acceptance by council would be January 24th.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Jeanie?
Thank you. With the increase in the funding for administrative purposes, is that going to provide us the ability to administer the additional projects and even some of the existing ones without using general fund money, or is it just going to reduce the general fund allocation?
There's a number of different funding sources. There's CDBG, and we also have some local housing, and then state funding sources, so it's always a challenge, and sometimes it doesn't cover it completely, but we always try to reduce the amount of general fund as possible. It's really hard sometimes to tell until the end of the year exactly what all the costs are going to be, because in addition to staff time, we also have to use that planning and administration portion for any other activities, not necessarily staff time, but like for our fair housing study that we're doing right now, that counts as planning and administration. So in addition to the amount they give to staff, we also have to put some of that towards studies. So the short answer is it does not always cover it, but we do our best.
Okay, but we don't know at this point, because it's too early in the year.
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. Was there any thought given to not just doing our, would you go back a slide? Yes, yes. To our Citywide Accessibility Improvement Project, which I support, but do you give any increased funding to some of the nonprofits that we always cut back on?
We did think about that, but because it's so late in the year and all of the funds have to be expended, you know, by the end of the year, it can sometimes be hard for them to change their programs. But that's, you know, always an option, that it could increase the amount to public services, but we recommended the accessibility project because we had this immediate need ready right now, and we weren't sure if they had the capacity to spend those funds within the time.
I bet they could've.
But it is definitely something, you know, that We did think about that, but because it's so late in the year and all of the funds have to be expended, you know, by the end of the year, it can sometimes be hard for them to change their programs. But that's, you know, always an option, that it could increase the amount to public services. But we recommended the accessibility project because we had this immediate need ready right now. And we weren't sure if they had the capacity to spend those funds within the timeframe.
I bet they could have.
But it is definitely something, you know, that we can absolutely look at. And when we bring the 2019 action plan, I intend to have a contingency plan next time. And so if we do end up getting more or less, we can have a plan outlined from the front, and so they can have kind of like an option A or an option B for their program. So hopefully, we'll be able to plan that better next year.
Well, I have to say, this is the first time in my recollection that we've ever had an adjustment that increased our funding rather than reduced our funding.
That's true. I looked back, and I think the last time, it was like maybe 2004, that we got a tiny bit of an adjustment, but nothing this significant. It was definitely unexpected.
Nice, good news.
It's good news, that's for sure, yes.
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, this is a public hearing, and so I'm going to open it and see if anybody wants to come forward and speak to this item. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Be glad to entertain a motion.
Move of approval.
I second it.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? There are none. Motion case.
Thank you.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is Rental Housing Inspection Unit Authorization to Create City Ordinance and Implement Program. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the creation of a city ordinance and fee schedule for a rental housing inspection unit.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Chris Boyd, the city manager. I'm going to take a minute to introduce this item. It's an important item where a lot of staff work has gone into it, and just want to take a minute to first say, in terms of why we're here and why we brought this item. This particular item transcends really all of the council's strategic goals, in terms of fiscal stability, improvement of our streets and infrastructure, diversifying our economy, expanding public safety, and improving community vibrancy and engagement. The general plan also talks about developing, conserving, and improving our housing stock. And we wanted to make sure, we're not in a position to have any additional impacts on the general fund at this time. The council's been very focused on improving education, attracting businesses, and overall attracting new families. This program really addresses and touches all of those in that, you know, we have neighborhoods that need attention. And we've tried to bring forward here a robust program that's very action-oriented, that we believe that over time will most definitely see results and have impact in improving our neighborhoods. And, you know, there's been a lot of input and work that's gone into this program. Really want to thank Chief Lawrence, Lieutenant Gutierrez, Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager, and the whole team who's worked, been working on this project for many months. So we're going to lay this out for you in detail right now. So Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to, before I turn it over to Lieutenant Gutierrez, who's really our expert in this area, I wanted to point out that this project has really been an exercise in reaching out to stakeholders and understanding this from a much higher perspective. During our study session, we listened to city council, we took all of your comments, and we tweaked those into our project here that you're about to see tonight. We've spoke with Jim Lofgren of the California Apartment Association. My staff has spoken with Kalen Wright of the Sacramento Association of Realtors Group, and we've been in the media. So we've had an opportunity to listen to all of the different perspectives and all of the different concerns. And Lieutenant Gutierrez has taken all of those, that input, and worked this project to what we believe is the very best project that we can present to you tonight. This is a project that will not touch the general fund, and what he's about to lay out to you is what we believe is our best effort to put together a robust program to make Citrus Heights a better city.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, or I'm sorry. I left at 6:30 this morning to Fresno and made it back, so good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Lieutenant Dave Gutierrez, and I manage our special operations unit, and within that is our code enforcement unit, where this program would ultimately reside. So we'll talk about rental housing in Citrus Heights. Rental property provides necessary housing options for all of our citizens. Housing is a valuable asset that must be preserved. In our 14.2 square miles here in Citrus Heights, we have 15,000 rental units. It's approximately 54% of all of the housing units in Citrus Heights. This is a graph that shows the rental units per square mile as compared to the city of Sacramento, the city of Rancho Cordova, and the county of Sacramento. As you can see, Citrus Heights is depicted in orange, and we're at about 1,100 rental units per square mile. Second is the city of Sacramento in the yellow-orange color there. The Rancho Cordova is depicted in gray, and county of Sacramento is blue. So as you can see, it's fairly dense. 39.7% of our housing units were built between 1970 and 1979. 23.1% of our housing units were built between 1980 and 89, which means 88.1% of our housing units were built prior to 1990. That means they're currently at least 28 years old. Some of our things that we looked at, we reached out to Greg Anderson in the building department, and talking about some quality control issues that occurred in the 70s, 80s with building, there was a lack thereof. Some of the materials used did not have a long usable lifespan, and critical components in our housing stock are at or nearing their useful life. And some of those components are HVAC, air conditioning, siding in the stucco, roofs and windows. And many of these failures can lead to mold and other affiliated issues in our housing So this map represents where our Citrus Heights rental property owners live. This is their primary address. So as you can see, 40% of our rental property owners live in excess of 10 miles away from our city, and a significant portion of those live in and around the Bay Area. Rental housing can deteriorate due to intentional and unintentional neglect by property owners, managers, and tenants, and that will result in substandard conditions, adversely affect economic values of neighboring structures, and also can be hazardous to public health and safety. This is a social media post that we recently found at the end of last month, so the end of July, and we really believe this highlights some of the things that we hope that this program will prevent from ever occurring. We have some vulnerable people in the city, and vulnerable means, you know, they may not, and I have a slide that will talk about this, but just tee in this particular social media post up, they don't know where to turn, and it could be for a lot of different reasons. So I'll read this real quick. "We chose to redact who this was, obviously, and what street they live on, but they've been there sadly for almost a year. We have a slumlord who owns multiple buildings on the block. Our building is not being properly maintained. We deal with roaches, mold, leaks, no heat, not like I need it now, but haven't had heat since day one. She fails to take proper steps to fix issues. She puts Band-Aids over things and calls it done. We pay $1,295 a month to live in this. We are tired of it. We haven't left due to me not working and having my baby, so financially, we can't get the money to move. Does anyone know who I would contact to take legal action against her and get our money back so we can move? Mind you, due to the roaches, no way we can take all of our belongings to a new place. Or who can I contact to complain about the building? Any help would be awesome." So I'm not sitting here today representing that every property owner is like this property owner, but they do exist, and we want to protect those tenants that live in those conditions and partner with those property owners that are doing things right. Our current code enforcement staff consists of three full-time code enforcement officers that represents about $239,000 in salary and benefits. They currently handle over 1,300 code enforcement-related calls per year. Some take, and a significant portion of them take months and even years to close out. There's lots of time and effort that goes into those cases. On average, almost 30% are attributed to rental properties. Code enforcement officers also handle calls related to graffiti, marijuana grows, and sign ordinance violations. Breaking this down to a reactive proactive percentage, they're about, they're able to do about 5% proactive work. 95% of what they currently do is all reactive, so complaint-driven. Why we believe reactive is not optimal. It's a complaint-driven inspection, lack of reporting due to fear of retaliation eviction, lack of familiarity with or fear of public agencies, and also language barriers. These are those vulnerable tenants that I referenced earlier with that social media post. Tenant is the complainant instead of being a participant with a proactive model like what we're proposing here today. Inexpensive concerns can become expensive if not addressed or known. Some of the common violations that we find in our outreach with other organizations that already have rental housing inspection units, they find similar ones. It's missing or non-operable smoke alarms, lack of GFCI protection, lack of weather protections, oftentimes in the roofs, but also windows and doors, faulty water heater installations, faulty plumbing, hazardous wiring, mold, rodent, and insect infestations and accumulation of debris. So here's a few pictures. Missing or inoperable smoke alarm, lack of GFCI protection in bathrooms near sinks, which is required, improper water heater installation. You can see that that pressure relief valve is not properly plumbed, and it's lacking earthquake straps. And then also faulty or failing roofs. Here are some common things that are seen in rental properties and other properties alike. Mold. So these things can become tremendous issues, and once it gets into the framing, can start dry rotting the framing, and then you have structural issues. Unsanitary, unsafe conditions on the left, and then you can see what water damage, if left unchecked or not found out about until it's too late, it can cause that structural These are some exterior photos. These are our rental properties in Citrus Heights. These were actually taken this month. This type of, I have about four pictures here I can go through. The accumulation of debris, you can see the weeds, and these conditions are, cause fire hazards as well as infestation issues. So we know that rental housing works, the rental housing inspection unit works. The city of Sacramento, they initiated their program in 2008. The first year, they inspected nearly 3,000 units. They found almost 70% had violations. In year three, so between 2011 and 2012, they doubled their inspections, over-doubled to 7,000, and they only found 30% of the units contained violations. So we, obviously, that's a huge success. Our current housing stock fee is $12 per door. That's an annual fee. The last increase to our housing stock fee was back in 2010. That generates approximately $180,000. And the current housing stock fee funds about 75% of the current code enforcement salary and benefits only. That doesn't include support functions such as program assistance and records functions, or vehicle costs, or other related equipment costs such as uniforms and radios and things like that. So our rental housing inspection unit program goals, we want to proactively identify, blighted, and deteriorate our rental housing stock. We want to ensure rehabilitation and preservation of our housing stock. And we want to ensure the housing stock meets minimum building code requirements, housing code, other housing code standards, it's safe to occupy for our residents and tenants, and it contributes to quality of life for tenants and improves quality of our neighborhoods. So we kind of broke this down into four different areas with our stated goals. So for tenants, obviously, we want to provide them safe housing. For our property owners, we want to partner with them and hope to increase property values and educational tools for them to be more, to be successful at property management. For the city, enhance rental housing stock, which will improve overall interest in Citrus Heights from those folks that might be looking to move to the region. And for all residents, increase property values and improve quality of life in all of our neighborhoods throughout the city. So the purpose of the proposed fees, obviously, we want to just cover operating expenses. This is not to generate excess revenue, it's just solely to fund the actual functions of this unit. So those items are employee wages and benefits, purchasing or leasing supplies, equipment or materials. We wanted to set staffing levels at a level that would not burden the city or any of our existing work groups. We wanted to minimize the financial impact to property owners as little as possible while being able to create an effective and sustainable program. We want to improve service within existing service areas, and as mentioned before, without negatively impacting the general fund. So they're all from startup costs, and we estimate those to be about $145,790. And that'll, what that includes is two fully outfitted vehicles, uniforms and equipment for the code enforcement officers, training for the code enforcement officers, as well as technology. Startup costs are expected to initially be paid through the general fund, but those will be reimbursed through the rental housing inspection unit fees. So there'll be a registration component. Some units are, programs have registration, and some have business license options. We chose the registration option. So all rental property owners will be required to annually register to be part of the rental housing inspection unit. That would be per property. It's a $95 annual registration fee, and that breaks down to $7.92 per month, and that's collected annually. So in addition, like we talked about a few moments ago, our current housing stock fee is $12, and that was, that $12 was not taken into consideration when building the budget for this program. So that still exists, and that $12 housing stock fee will still be used to operate our existing code enforcement functions. So there would be, there's a proposed increase to that housing stock fee, and we've done it in a tiered system. So it'd be about 42 cents per month increase for properties with more than 99 units. That breaks down to $5 per unit on an annual increase. 67 cents per month increase for properties with five to 99 units. That is an $8 per unit annual increase. And a $1.25 per month increase for properties with one to four units. It's a $15 increase per unit on an annual basis. So we broke these fees down a little bit further. So this example here is for a 100-unit complex. They currently pay $12 per door. Under the new rental inspection, rental housing inspection unit, 100-unit complex would pay an annual $17, would be a $5 increase. Again, that $12 is not factored in, it's the $5 increase per door rental stock fee and a $95 annual property registration fee. And how that breaks down is about 49 cents per door per month. So on the opposite end of the spectrum, you have a single-family home with just obviously one door. They currently pay a $12 rental stock fee. They would pay an increased $15 for their rental stock fee and a $95 registration fee, and that breaks down to $9.16 per month. So our proposed staffing for the new rental housing inspection unit is three full-time code enforcement officers with specialized training. We also have two full-time program assistants factored in to help with all the administration and registration necessities. So our inspection plan, we are looking at a three-year inspection cycle. We're going to inspect 100% of exteriors of all rental housing units. We'll inspect the interior of all rental units, so 100% of units that have, properties that have less than 16 units. We'll inspect the minimum of 5% of units at rental properties with more than 15 units. We'll also inspect the interior of all rental units when code enforcement or when the rental housing inspection unit receives a complaint on a rental property, and we have no rental inspection fee. So just to understand where we came up with these numbers, inspecting the interior of all rental units with less than 16, so under state law, if you have 16 or more units, a property has to have onsite maintenance or onsite management. Tenants will have the right to refuse an inspection unless reasonable cause to believe a substandard living condition exists or there are exigent circumstances. So what we would consider to be exigent circumstances is a severe failure in the floor, where, you know, maybe in a two-story dwelling, a balcony that is collapsing, and there's still access from a sliding glass door coming out. If it's just reasonable cause to believe a substandard living condition, meaning maybe we received a complaint, but the tenant isn't cooperative, we always would have the option to write an administrative inspection warrant to go in to ensure that they're living in a appropriate conditions. If a property owner refuses an inspection but the tenant desires an inspection, we would inspect that unit, and that comes out of some case law, Griffith versus the City of Santa Cruz. The applicability applies to the interior and exterior of any single-family or multifamily residence that is being rented or is intended to be rented. There are a few exceptions, and those exceptions are units that have been newly constructed within the last five years, and for those rental units that are subject to routine inspection by another government agency such as Section 8 units. We would have a self-certification component to our program, and this pertains to properties with 16 units or more. If the property passes their initial inspection and the owner has no prior code violations, the property is eligible for self-certification for a period of three years. Self-certified locations must perform their own inspection annually and at each change of tenancy. Self-certification empowers rental property owners and provides an incentive to retain self-certification status. So some of our expected community benefits, citywide compliance will prevent blight and ensure tenants who live in rental housing are provided decent, safe, and sanitary housing, increase property values, and improve quality of life in neighborhoods. How we believe the property owners will benefit, there's going to be increased training. Self-certified properties will be required to complete a certification course through the California Apartment Association, which we believe will be beneficial to them, increase property values, and we want to help them protect their investment. So we know, based on the age of our housing stock, that we're coming to a time where we're going to have more failures. And then there's just the term I like to say, we just don't know what we don't know. And we want to try to catch these problems before they become expensive problems for property owners, and we want to prevent tenants from having to live in substandard conditions. So we want to be able to get ahead of those impending issues with this program that will be a proactive program. So staff recommendation, we recommend that city council adopt the resolution, which would authorize the city manager to direct staff to proceed with creating a city ordinance and a fee schedule for a new rental housing inspection unit. All of that would fall within the parameters of the staff report that's before you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Gutierrez. Before we get into council questions and comments, I was going to ask, we have two people who'd like to speak on this issue. First, Kalen Wright, followed by Jim Lofgren.
Good evening, council members. I am Kalen Wright, representing the Sacramento Association of Realtors. Thank you for your time this evening. When I identified this issue on Monday, Lieutenant Gutierrez and I have spoke several times. He's been very, very helpful throughout the week. And the Sacramento Association of Realtors have no problem with the idea of a rental inspection program. We were involved in the creation of the City of Sacramento and the County of Sacramento programs, which I believe have both been very successful, and we definitely want to make sure that residents have safe places to live. The story from social media that Lieutenant Gutierrez read is heartbreaking and unacceptable, and we need to find a way to go after those people. That said, the Sacramento Association of Realtors would like to be involved if this program does move forward in terms of the inspection checklist and the creation of the program. And as I know, I've told all of you, we do have some concerns about the fee structure that we would like to address when and if this moves forward. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Kalen.
Good evening. I'm Jim Lofgren, the senior vice president for the California Apartment Association. And our association is supportive of this inspection program. We think that they're important to ensure that we preserve the housing stock, especially in times like these where every single unit is needed. We have a serious housing supply problem that is contributing to the lack of affordable housing, and we do know that there are bad actors out there. The percentage of them is unknown. I think this program can help weed out the bad from the good. I do want to say, though, a couple of points, and I'm going to be pointing to some areas where I think we need to work together on, but I'll tell you that we're 95% there. I appreciate the cooperation and the outreach to our association. A lot of our ideas were incorporated into it. One of the things that we agree to is that you want this to be a self-supporting program. You don't want it to tap into the general funds. So we're trying to balance out the protection of the owners, preservation of the properties with the cost of the program. I'm a bit concerned about the cost of the program, especially for the single-family home. As you can see, as you saw by the prices, the cost of the program will be about $120 for an owner. That amounts to 10 bucks a month, and that is a cost that will be passed on to the tenants, probably about a 1% rent increase. So that concerns us. So we're trying to figure out, and it's also going to result in owners that get it. I'm an owner myself. I pass all the inspections in the city, yet if I was in the city of Citrus Heights, first of all, this will be the most expensive rental inspection program by far in the region because of the base fee. That being said, I think that the staff has been very conscious about making sure that the program meets its goals. One of the things that we suggest is that you take a look and tweak it a little bit. You have an aggressive three-year program. In other cities, they do a five-year program. If you spread out the inspections over a five-year period, you could reduce the cost of the program and still ensure that every property is inspected. The other thing is, for units under 16, I think it's a bit unreasonable to require that every unit be inspected. Think about this. So you have a 10-unit apartment building, and when you do the inspection, all 10 units have to be inspected. That means all 10 tenants have to be present at that same time. And if I'm an owner in San Francisco and I legitimately hire a local property management company to manage my property, that is going to be a very expensive inspection. And if I'm doing a good job, it's kind of a penalty on those that are doing a good job. In the budget, there is no revenue for fines, and I think there will be fines, okay? Especially if you've seen what you saw on the screen, there will be fines. Now, I don't think the program should be funded by fines, but I'm really concerned about the program having too much of a cost on good owners. So what we're looking at is, is there a way to tweak that $90 cost and bring it down so that you don't get a lot of phone calls from owners that get sticker shock going, what is this new tax that I'm getting, and I'm a good owner? So that's the thing I would like to have you take a closer look at. I think that these things could be tweaked between now and the next time this ordinance comes to this council, and we would be in full support of its passage. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Jim?
Well, I just want to make a clarification, Jim, and it is not a tax, it's a fee. You know, a tax suggests, you know, revenue that will be retained by the city for other purposes. So if someone asks us about a tax--
I agree.
--we would clarify that this is a fee to cover expenses.
I agree.
I appreciate your input. I think it's valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lofgren. Okay. Questions from council members? Who'd like to go first?
I just have a couple of comments. You know, first of all, thank you, chief. Thank you, Lieutenant Gutierrez. This was one of the hot topics we talked about in our retreat. We hear time and time again by the citizens in terms of quality of life. And, you know, to be honest with you, from the rentals, it's typically the one to four units that are the most problematic within the city, you know, the McCune Fordplexes, et cetera. It's not the bigger ones, so I get that. I like the component of the self-inspection, if that's the route they want to go. But I do want to clarify, in terms of a comment that was made, this is the most expensive one in the county. I would counter that to say, you know, take a look at the county. They charge $350 per inspection. We're not going to charge anything per inspection. So even if you figure out that, you know, we're going to charge $127 a year, it's still, you know, very close, if not under, what the county charges. And if you have an inspection this year and you fail, you're going to get inspected the next year. So I would counter to say, you know, we don't know overall where we're going to land on this. We want to be aggressive because we do have the highest concentration of rental properties in the entire county. We want to get this cleaned up. We don't want it to be a problem. And I think the numbers are reasonable. Certainly, we'll look at them after the fact. But I don't want to sit here and dicker back and forth over $10 here, $15 here, whatever. The numbers seem reasonable in terms of covering the cost and not letting it hit the general plan. But, you know, again, we're not planning on an inspection fee, and, you know, it's even higher. I own some property in Santa Barbara. I had to pay $175 annual business license, plus if they did an inspection, it was $450. Now, granted, a little different county than up here, but that's part of business, the way I look at it. So we need every rental unit that we have, but we need them to be clean, we need them to be safe. I think this is a good start. If after a year, we're looking at it, and there are fines, and there's additional, you know, money in the pot, so to speak, I am certainly not against coming back and, you know, looking at it. We don't want this to be a profit center. We just want to cover it, and it shouldn't take any money out of the general plan. But I think initially, based on the chiefs and lieutenant, okay, let's be honest, Lieutenant Gutierrez's numbers, no offense, chief, but we know who did the work. They seem reasonable to me, and I'm willing to move forward with those to get this issue resolved, because again, I've been here for 15 years, and it's grown quite loud in the last three years, quality of life, and a lot of it stems from rental properties. I'm not talking about the dead grass because of the watering. I'm talking about stuff like these pictures. So clearly, you know, if we had this in place, we probably wouldn't have had to go in and purchase some of those properties on Sarnara. They would have been in better shape, would have been a different story. So I support it, and, you know, I'm certainly open to listening to comments from both agencies, but I don't want to get into, you know, who's right and who's wrong in terms of should this be $95, should it be $80. I'm willing to move forward as it is, love to have the area realtors' help on checklists, et cetera. But I'm going to, at this point, believe that the staff's done their due diligence in terms of making this a non-cost program to the rest of the citizens who take care of their properties versus the ones who don't.
Okay. Thank you. Before I move on to more comments, I just had a question, but you mentioned fines. Don't we have an existing fine structure? I mean, how do we compel folks to comply right now with code enforcement on--
So if we did the initial inspection, there would be no cost for that. If they passed, there would be no cost. If they had minor violations that were fixed within 30 days and we verified those were fixed within 30 days, there would be no cost. Where the $470 reinspection fee would come into play would be is if we either had a major violation during the initial inspection that needed to be fixed, or if they had minor violations where we came back in 30 days and those minor violations had not been fixed.
Okay. So there is a way to compel?
Yes, sir.
That's a reinspection fee, that's not a fine, per se.
Right. That'd be the reinspection fee. Well, it's a way to hold them accountable, hopefully to motivate them to fix the issues.
But you had a good point, Steve. You know, what is our fine structure now? Do we have one?
For code enforcement violations? Yeah, it starts with the, I mean, it starts with a notice to abate, which there's nothing attached to that. There is a period of time that goes by, we go back out and reinspect. If you get to 60 days, 90 days out, and we send a notice of violation, it starts out at $420.
Okay.
And then escalates from there depending upon the severity of the violation and the lack of cooperation.
So then our code enforcement structure for everything else will remain separate from this, and that fee structure will continue to remain what it is today as far as the escalating fee, fines? And then this new proposal will stand on its own?
Yes, ma'am.
And Jenny, since you have the floor, would you like to continue?
Sorry?
No, it's all right.
I think yours, you're going to call in Brett.
Sure. Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, sir. The number of rental units you said was 15,000?
Approximately.
Where did we get that number from?
So Mike Petnato with IT is able to run a spreadsheet for us that shows that identifies where a property owner's primary address is versus who is actually in that house. And so if those two are different, it's a rental. That, and we also currently do all of our billing through the consolidated utility billing system with the county, and they provided us a list, and it almost was identical to that number.
Any idea where they get their information from?
From us.
No, no.
The city.
The county gets their information from us, you said?
Correct.
Okay, I thought you were using the county to say that that legitimizes our list in the city.
No, just over the period of the last couple of years, the most recent data that we were able to acquire through IT matches what has been billed for the last couple of years.
And that's just based on a different name at a different resident? The owner's name isn't appearing at the resident, or he gets the mail with some other resident or location?
Correct.
And the city's list and the county's list are cross-referenced against each other?
Okay, so we have about 15,000.
I'm sorry, what's that?
So we have about 15,000.
Yes, sir.
And then I think you mentioned that there were approximately 1,300 calls last year, was it? Code enforcement calls?
On average, we have about 1,300 code enforcement violation calls yearly.
And I think you mentioned that 27% of them were connected to rental units?
Yes, sir.
So when I run that number, I come up to 2%. I come up with about 350, which is about 2% of the rental units.
Yeah, those--
Resulted in issues that somebody reached out to code enforcement, or I guess code enforcement also drives around at times and might see their own issues, too. But at some point, something came into code enforcement from approximately 2% of our rental units. Would that be correct, based on those numbers?
So based on our data, we know that that 27% actually represents a lot more when it comes to workload, because those rental properties traditionally are the one unit to four units. And those cases oftentimes take the longest to resolve. So although the 27% represents a call for service, that one call for service could take six months or a year to resolve.
So I'm just trying to go with complaints and numbers and try to understand the level of problem that we're actually experiencing. The 27% that are connected to rental units and just complaints in general sometimes are repeat problems. You're going back to the same unit. You're dealing with the same problem, or at least the same problem child or problem resident. Wouldn't that be correct?
It's possible.
Yeah. Well, I think it's likely, definitely likely. I don't think we go one time and that's it, and we never see them again sometimes. So what I see is, at a maximum, about 2% of the rental units are at this time causing enough problem that is resulting in us having to take action of some kind, or at least respond. That doesn't even necessarily, or have you taken those calls and are we saying that those are all legitimate calls, all those, that 1,300 calls? Because I'm sure at times we get a call that is not a legitimate call.
When people call for code enforcement issues, we often don't find that it's a--
Yeah, I'm sure it is, most of the time, you know--
And these are calls for service, as he mentioned in his presentation. Often, we don't know what we don't know, and we have people out there that don't know who to call, just as we demonstrated--
Oh, sure. I think that's something we should deal with, definitely, an education component. I'm just trying to get at the problem. And what I don't see is any evidence for me that indicates there's a problem on any scale that where the government needs to be showing up, knocking on your door, and saying we're going to come in and inspect your unit, your living quarters, your home. And so I don't think we've got it to that point, and I believe that the concerns that you noted are very legitimate. I mean, they're very concerning, and I think that there's a component already in place. They can contact code enforcement if they have those kind of conditions, such as the message that was received from the one person. If that person had been educated to know that they could contact the city, they could contact code enforcement and have them come out, then that would be a resource for that resident to be able to use, correct?
Yes.
So I just don't think we've seen any kind of evidence that says we're at that point where, as a government, we need to step up and say, we need to start this aggressive program. And I don't support it for that reason more than anything. I think if there was evidence of that problem, then I think that we should do something like this. But we can say we want to be proactive about it, but again, this is a very major thing of coming into somebody's home. And for that reason, I can't support it. And I also am very concerned that, like it's been mentioned, that the cost seems to be way above and beyond what any other entity is charging for a similar-type program.
So to that specific point, the last point that you just made, the other programs rely heavily on their general fund to fund their programs.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Yes. First of all, thank you, Lieutenant, for your work on this. I did raise some questions regarding the fees and things with city manager Chris Boyd, and I appreciate the fact that you did present this in such a way that it broke those down further. And I also appreciated the news media release that you did that really clarified a lot of questions, I think, for the public. One of the things that I like about the program, and in driving around, I can think of three places right now where the T-111 siding on these-- three places right now where the T-111 sighting on these apartments, built in probably the 1990s, is beyond repair, beyond being patched, they're falling off the wall. You can see studs, missing insulation behind some of them in a few places. One of them is also a commercial building here in town over, off of Sunrise. My concern that the city is not, that we don't address, are the issues that led to the collapse of the building in Oakland where several people were killed, the fire set in. Because there was no inspection, just the simple protective measures for the community were missed. There was the apartment house in Berkeley where, because they don't have an inspection program, because they were not actively taking care of the housing elements that they had, a group of students on a balcony, much like we have in our apartment units here, because of wood rot issues, slid right off of the house, crashed down to the, I think it was a third story, killing, maiming, and injuring several people. The city of Roseville has gone through, there's some apartment units there, not because they were inspected, but because at some point in time, through complaints, the apartment units were having to strip off all that T-111, and going through and replacing a tremendous amount of work, things that were hazardous to the community, to the people who lived there. For that reason, I do like the inspection program. I think it gives us a benefit of getting ahead of issues on housing units that are 30 or more years old. I also like the fact that we are not forcing this upon the residents, they can decline, and short of any exigent circumstance or evidence that there are problems with the individual apartment unit, they're protected. We're not going to walk in on them, as I understand it. That's not our role or our idea. It's, the whole premise is to make sure that we have housing units that are safe for occupancy, and that they are safe for the families and the occupants who live there, and that it protects the property owners to make sure that the values of those properties stay up. Because of 15,000 units, a whole lot of our property value of our community is based there and reflects on the other housing units around them. And then the last thing that I will say here is that with this program, what I, what I hope you achieve is, I speak to people all the time about, when I'm at restaurants or about, I talk to the service industry folks, where do you live and why? And it's amazing the number of people who work in Roseville, Folsom, Sacramento, that live in Citrus Heights. It's affordable, they're well cared for, they're well-maintained houses, and they've got, to an extent, they have some very proactive folks that take care of them, their units, and they like that, and that speaks well for our community. Those are the kind of folks I kind of like to hang on to as residents here by making sure that we maintain that standard. And as these get older, we're going to have to take these steps. So thank you very much, and I do support the idea.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Ms. Bruins, Jeanie, your turn.
Thanks, I didn't mean to interrupt earlier.
No, that's fine, it was all relevant, I interrupted too.
Well, what are the complaints that we hear from the public is why it takes so long to do code enforcement, and why we aren't more proactive? And, you know, it's all resources, it's staffing and the dollars that we have to run those programs. And so, I see this as a major response to what we have historically heard from our citizens, that we aren't doing enough soon enough. And it's, again, it's all because of staffing and our ability to hire more staff. So, because this is a separate unit that's going to be self-sustaining, I really think it's going to have far-reaching impacts on everybody. And so, I'm glad Al clarified that we are not government forcing our ways through someone's door, knocking on their doors, demanding to get in, that is not this program. In fact, if anything, I would imagine we have cooperation from tenants, more than resistance from tenants, who want to assist us in upgrading and maintaining their units. And so, I am going to support directing staff to proceed with this. I want to thank Sacramento Area SAR and our Rental Housing Association for coming tonight and speaking on behalf of your constituents, and I'm pleased to know that you want to work with our staff to make this the best ordinance possible. And I think if we do a dollars-for-dollars analysis with the different ways of funding something like this, what we're doing versus what SAC City or SAC County is doing with the inspection fees, it's probably going to all come out in the wash pretty well, I think. So, an increase of 45 cents a month to under $10 a month is something that I think is reasonable. And being on a street where there are single-family rental houses, I can tell you that even if they passed it along, a $10 a month increase to someone who's paying 14, 15 hundred dollars a month for, or more, for rental housing is not going to be a deal breaker for them to stay in that home. So, it's kind of like a utility fluctuation, if you will. So, thank you so much, I know a lot of, hundreds of hours have gone into preparing this, and you did a fine job.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jeanie. In the media, I did say that I was going to suggest a continuation, and that was because I was concerned with the outreach, and I'd heard from the Sacramento Area Realtors, and thank you very much, Lieutenant Gutierrez, for, over the last few days, briefing Kalen about this and bringing her to the table. That was really important to me, and I appreciate it. You know, Jeff talked earlier about the strategic planning we did in November, and that's when we addressed dilapidated housing and our intent to get a rental housing inspection program together. And I'd like to thank Chief Lawrence for delegating that to Lieutenant Gutierrez, as Jeff did. It's been a huge effort, and I know it's not just you, and by default, I'm thanking everybody that's been involved in this. And, one of the things I clued in on, and, you know, is our community survey. We did one in 2017 and 2012. 91% of our residents think the overall appearance of our city is important, and I agree with that. In fact, 93% of our residents think that keeping neighborhoods clean is the third most important issue facing the city, right behind public safety. And we also know, increasing over time, some of our neighborhoods have declined. In 2012, 77% of surveyed residents felt this way, and now 93% do. So I think there's, the public support of this. Neighborhood night out, driving around, I mentioned that earlier, and seeing the rest of the city. I think I could tell where the rentals were, I really could, and that one, you know, we have a rental on our street, we're blessed, they take care of it, the lawn does get a little long, but the house is well taken care of it. And that affects my property values and the property owner of that rental's values. And so, the fact that those are well-kept affects us all. And I like the idea of being proactive rather than reactive. And we're still going to have the reactive component with our existing unit for complaints and non-rental units, we still have issues with those. And so, you know, we talk about other rental housing inspection programs in our region, and I think we're creating something that's truly Citrus Heights and may be hard to compare to others as well. The fact that we're trying not to impact our general fund and make this pay for itself is a really cool component that really helps me support this whole idea of putting this together. And, so, I guess, I think I've said everything I want to say, and I'm ready to support this program, knowing full well, we've still got to put the ordinance together, we've still got to get the fine-tooth comb out. We'll see it twice here, am I correct?
That's correct.
We'll see the ordinance for a first reading, then we have to do a second reading, and that'll be a while before it takes effect.
Correct.
Do you have any idea on the timing on that? If we approved it?
Prior to January 1.
Okay.
Yes.
That's really ambitious, but I know you can get it done. All right, anything else? Any other questions, comments?
I'll move the item, sir.
It's a motion?
I'll second.
It's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And abstentions? Motion carries 4-1. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is Department Report Number 12. The subject is Youth and Family Services Unit. Presentation by the Citrus Heights Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Gina Anderson.
Assistant Chief of Police?
I am your Assistant Chief of Police, thank you.
I'm trying to get used to the new title, congratulations.
I'm trying to get used to it myself. I'd like to introduce you to Sergeant Wes Herman. Sergeant Herman is the very first sergeant that has been selected to our newly created Youth and Family Services Unit. So our Youth and Family Services Unit was recently created by our police department to enable us to have a better focus on the needs of the youth in our community, and Sergeant Herman was selected to lead that unit. So he's going to provide you with our department report tonight. It's an overview of the programs that fall within this new unit, and he will be introducing you to his new team.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, esteemed council members, city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to present this update. I understand I have just a few short moments, so I will be brief, but I'm excited to be here. As Chief said, I'm Sergeant Wesley Herman, and super excited about this opportunity to bring all of our youth programs in under one umbrella within the police department. I'd like to introduce you to my team who's here tonight, most of my team anyhow. Detective Bill Dunning is here. Detective Dunning's been with us since 2008. He's served in a number of different capacities, including patrol, FTO. He is a SWAT member, and most recently was in our Special Investigations Unit. However, most importantly is that Detective Dunning is a graduate from our schools here in Citrus Heights, and really, one of the many success stories that we have here to celebrate in Citrus Heights, and we're super excited to have him on the team. He is in charge of all juvenile-related investigations as the detective. He has an emphasis and is an expert actually in the state and in the region in human trafficking, will be working missing person cases and things of that nature to try to identify early indication signs of that. He's also on the PAL board with the rest of the team and is an Explorer Advisor. Our two school resource officers are here tonight as well, Barry Cox and Jacob Davis. Barry has been with us since 2006, is an inaugural member of the department, and has been in the capacity of SRO for the last approximately four years, and he's done a very good job there. He's also a PAL board member and one of the Explorer Advisors. Jacob joins us about two years ago from the East Coast, where he was in an SRO capacity for a very large school district there, multiple SROs, has a lot of experience and is bringing a lot of energy to the team, we're happy to have him as well.
Good, welcome.
Real quick, like, I'm going to take you through a couple of programs. Again, I want to keep this brief, I'm sure you're all aware-
I don't know what you were told, take your time, Sergeant Herman.
Okay, thank you, sir. The PAL program, so I'm going to just highlight some of the programs that are under our purview. Again, this is the first opportunity we've had to bring all of the youth programs in under one umbrella, and to focus on those programs rather than tasking this as an ancillary assignment to one of our other officers in addition to their primary duties, which really gives us a strategic opportunity to focus on the youth and really expand the programs and kind of bring another energy and excitement to those programs and growing them. You're all familiar with the Police Activities League, so that's under our purview. We have a couple of new additions that are going on with that program, including the after-school program at Rush Park that we're excited about for juveniles after school. But as you know, there are numerous PAL events every year. Commander Jason Russo oversaw that program, did an outstanding job, and so we'll be working together on that. One of the most exciting programs we have right now is the Public Safety Pathway Program. That program has existed within the San Juan School District previously, but this is the first time it's come to our city. It'll be at Mesa Verde this year, and that's basically introduction for juniors and seniors to get a better idea of what goes on in the criminal justice field. They have both in-class instruction as well as an internship where they'll be able to be placed within different law enforcement agencies, ourself included. And this is going to be a great opportunity to expose them to the technical side of our career, give them an inside look at if this is a career decision they want to make down the road, and if they want to go into the law enforcement field. We'll also use that as probably a feeding source for our own Explorer program, which I'll touch on in a minute. Here's the members of the PAL board within our department currently. Most notably, we have over 600 kids in the program, about 350 are active in that program. And, as I mentioned previously, there's a lot of events that we do every year, and we have a tremendous show-up of youth in the community. Our Explorers are very involved, our Advisors are very involved, and it's, as I mentioned before, a well-run program, thanks to Commander Russo. Here's a listing of some of the different events that take place on an annual basis, and I'm not going to read all those to you, but as you all have been aware and you've all been to these events, the turnout is typically very, very well-attended. As I mentioned, the two SROs currently oversee approximately 12 San Juan schools here in Citrus Heights. They, their primary duty obviously is ensuring the safe campuses during school hours, but also during after-school hours. One of the focuses we are looking to do is to continue maintaining that positive relationship between the school and the city and the police department, so they will be our liaisons for that. And then, as I mentioned, they're the lead Explorer, the lead PAL Advisors for our Explorer program, sorry, the lead Explorer Advisors for our Explorer program. Juvenile diversion, as you're aware, the goal many times is to keep youth out of the juvenile justice system. There's good studies that show that there are benefits to preventing them from entering that system. We have a diversion program that is run by Detective Dunning for low-level offenses where we're able to try to divert them and keep them from entering into that system. And so he reviews those crimes, the low-level crimes, and sees if there's an opportunity for us to work with those kids and help them understand where they may have gone awry and prevent them from doing that again in the future. Our Explorer program, as I mentioned, we have approximately 23 members in that program currently, with about eight advisors. They train a couple times a month, they get out to numerous community events. Most of you probably saw some of them at the National Night Out the other night. They're a tremendous help to the department, and they're great ambassadors for us in the community, and the opportunities they have for leadership in that program are tremendous, and we're very proud of them. They competed recently at the CHP Academy and won several awards, we're very proud of them, and we're going to be looking to do that again here in the future. We have both officers and professional staff as our advisors, and the kids get an opportunity to see both officer-related functions as well as the other administrative functions, which are very important in our department. As I mentioned, they are involved in numerous events every year, there's probably in excess of 40 events, here's a few photos of those. And in terms of future opportunities, we are looking at not only reviewing and assessing the programs that we have currently, but, and making those better if there's opportunities to do that, but also looking at other programs to supplement, complement, the offering that we're giving the youth in the community. One of those is the Parent Project. We met, had a recent meeting this last week with the San Juan Unified School District. We will be bringing that forward this year. We're going to be doing that at Sylvan Middle School, and it's an opportunity for us to support the parents who may have youth in their home that are causing problems for them, and they don't necessarily have the resources or the education or support to make a better opportunity for those youth. So, we're going to be supporting them with that. We'll be doing some safety assessments, both the physical assets at our schools as well as different threat, you know, nobody likes to talk about those things, but there obviously are threats that are, that happen, and so we'll be making some assessments both with some of our tactical teams as well as ourself, just to make sure that we can try to provide the most security for our students and their families. We're going to be looking to expand the Explorer program and take those numbers up a little bit, and again, I mentioned, we'll be looking at the Pathway Program for opportunities for recruitment there. And then there'll be other additional youth-related programs that come up throughout the year that we will assess, and we're certainly open to, if there's suggestions that you have or others that you hear from the community, I'm happy to meet with them and find if there's an opportunity to partner with them. And we've coined a little phrase in our unit, we're the ambassadors of fun, so we make that a big part of what we do every day, and that's, we've got the right team in place, we're very excited, we appreciate the support from Chief Lawrence and Assistant Chief Anderson. Like I said, we're very excited and hope to see you guys at some of the upcoming events. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We know how important it is to interact with our youth and do it soon, early, often. Any other comments?
I just have one. First of all, I think this is great. I think we all, you know, support having fun in our schools, but more importantly, having law enforcement there when we need it. In particular, I will address Jacob and Barry. aside for the two high schools, the middle school, and the other schools. I've talked to the principals, I've talked to the teachers, sometimes they come forward and take us up on money, sometimes they don't. It isn't roll over at the end of the year, it disappears, it's a good chunk of money. So, all I'm saying is, you gentlemen are on the campuses, you hear things, whether it's, you know, something for the school, I would mention Mesa with this new program, there might be a way to partner, you know, to help them with some funding. But the other thing too is, you know, kids who are struggling, families who are struggling, you know, they give two hundred fifty to five hundred dollars pretty much by just asking. If you see something like that where there's a need, come to me, I write those checks, so it's pretty easy to get them approved. I mean, I have to talk to some other people, but I would much prefer, you know, the money's sitting there, and I felt bad that we haven't been able to, you know, it's designed for the school and the people that are in the schools. You're the eyes and ears out there in addition to the teachers and principals, and if they won't come forward, if you hear of anything, please, you know, come on us, it's the same way, I'm sure they have money for it too. So, just keep that in the back of your mind, because I know money's always a challenge.
That's what it's raised for.
Yep.
Yeah, just, this is absolutely great, this is why we became a city, to be able to control our resources and put them in those areas that are most important to us. And looks like a great team, looks like a bunch of rebel browsers, actually, and I'm sure they have fun out there. But I really appreciate this aspect and hope that you guys find ways to connect even down into the younger grades, hopefully, so that we can develop positive relationships with kids, and when they see police officers, it's a positive thing, and they don't just automatically think negative. So, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Jeanne?
Well, Sergeant Herman, it's really nice to have you on board with the PAL team. And we have found that we are attracting younger kids through the PAL program than we first anticipated when we formed the program several years ago. We really thought we would be targeting middle schoolers and up, but it's the little kids that have been responding, and so, this gives us another opportunity to really solidify those relationships, as Brett said, they're so important. So, welcome aboard, and I'm excited to work with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Al?
Just very quickly, every year we go to Mesa Verde, we work with the students on the job preparation interviews that they do. And I ask them about the, those who are interested in law enforcement or those who are interested in community service, what they know about the PAL program, what they know about the officers who work on their campuses. And I encourage you very much, if you are at Mesa Verde, if you have a chance, those, talk to those kids, sit down and listen to what they have to say, and learn a little bit about the campus from their point of view, because I'm truly amazed at how well they know their school and how well they know their fellow students. I appreciate what you're doing, I think this is a great opportunity, and it's a great service to the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Sergeant Herman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. All right, next item, please.
Next item is City Manager Items, and we have one item.
Yes, briefly, Council, I just wanted to follow up on, there was, at our last council meeting, a member of the public, Mr. Warren, had made some comments regarding, if you recall, some potential hate crimes, and obviously, I wanted to follow up on that, had the chief follow up on that, I'd like to bring him up and just briefly report back, you know, it's the results of that are not what was discussed by this citizen, and I want to make sure we're supporting our officers here and the integrity from which they serve. So, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I wanted to start by saying that the police department, we deal in facts and the truth, and that's our job is to get to the facts, and it was concerning last council meeting to hear this issue characterized as a hate crime and a violation of the law. And when it came to our attention at the last council meeting, we did not have any forewarning of what that was about until we had an opportunity this past two weeks to look into it. What we discovered, and Assistant Chief Anderson has the details, and this centers around two postcards that were sent, one over a year ago in July of 2017, and one more recently, it was mailed, they were both mailed to a physician here locally in Citrus Heights. As the person last council meeting mentioned, the comments on the postcards, in his estimation, were derogatory, insulting, and demeaning. That may be true, but they weren't a crime. And to characterize it as a hate crime or a violation of the law was, and that Citrus Heights Police Department didn't do what we were supposed to do, was not only misleading, but it was a misstatement of fact. And so, our Assistant Chief has the details of what happened.
Thank you, Chief. I won't reiterate the July 27th email that I sent to City Council in order to clarify the timeline of when we received the complaints, but essentially, we were not aware that the complaint had occurred until an hour or so before the city council meeting. So, what we have done throughout our investigation, what we did find, I'll confirm what the chief said, the first postcard was received by our victim back in July of 2017. And at that time, we did take an incident report, an officer did investigate the allegations, and it was determined at that time that a hate crime had not occurred. Then, we come around for a year later, so now in June of 2018 was when our victim received the second postcard, and that second postcard also, not on its face, was a hate crime. And so, our officers looked at the facts of this investigation, they did reach out to and talk to the victim, because as we were not aware of at the last council meeting, the victim had not been contacted. This complaint, we became aware of it at the police department first by Mr. Warren, and he got those facts from an associate of the complaint. And so, the victim was, had never come forward at that point. And so, we reached out to the victim, conducted a thorough investigation. This investigation required us to contact multiple outside agencies to do additional investigative follow-up. And after that, was determined that even combining both of those postcards together, we still did not have a hate crime. So, at this point in time, our detectives, investigators have followed up on every lead that they could possibly follow up on, on what we've determined to not be a crime.
And we'll just close that if any new information came to light from the physician that received the postcard, certainly, we would investigate those, we've been in contact with her, and she's been satisfied with that contact.
Thank you.
My question, thank you for...
Thank you very much.
Next item? Thank you again.
Next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Okay, I've got one. I got it in the mail today, our packet for the Lega Cities Annual Conference Resolutions. And I know Jeanne's are representative, but I'd like to ask if we could put this on the agenda, I think there's only two resolutions, I won't go into them now, I haven't really looked at what they are, and put them on the agenda so we can discuss them, give Jeanne some direction and allow for public comment on these as well.
I'll second that.
Second, okay, first and a second, that's all I need?
I'm good.
Okay, here you go, here's your packet, no, I need to keep that handy. Anything else, anybody else? We have no more items, right?
No.
We're out of here, reading adjourned, thank you.